I'm out of Reed Soul anymore, never was.
I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Sollee?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallochson?
Yes.
Marye?
Yes. Citizen comments, if anyone would like to speak to the council, now would be the good time to do it if you're not on the agenda later. Okay, hearing none, we have no public hearings tonight, reading an approval of minutes from November twenty-second, regular meeting.
I will move approval of the November twenty-second regular meeting minutes.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. We have the November twenty-second condensed version.
I will approve of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. We have the consent agenda, consisting of the audit of city bills, gambling reports from the American Legion and the Eagles, transfer report, expenditure report, airport reconstruction pay estimate number seven, and the tourism board minutes. I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or question on any of the items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Donations, requests, and communications. There are several different donations, we have first, first of all, we have a donation from January for the Morris Police Department for four hundred dollars from West Central Christian Homes.
What happens to that now, but where does that go?
Just goes towards whatever expenses we had for the police department in twenty twenty-two. You know, some of these, Whitney and I had a discussion about this, you know, some of these just come in and we want to make sure that they get in front of you so you know that they're there and that you approve them and realistically, this, this one was early in twenty twenty-two, so it's probably already spent.
If I can say just some, these are just a couple that were doing some here in housekeeping and we want to make sure all get accepted by the council. So there's some very new ones, but then like the January one, just look through the cracks, we just want to make sure you guys accept it. But Reggie was really good about making sure he spent donated funds for the police department and he did spend this in the police department.
Okay, good. So it's not a, it's not a question that is just sitting there, wait until we approve it and then we do something with it, it's already happened.
Yeah, we just got to make sure you guys accept it, so keep the auditors happy.
Great. So do we need separate motions on?
Yeah, I think you do one motion to approve more if you want.
Okay, so we have, we have that one, we have a donation in September for the Morris Fire Department for two thousand from West Central Initiative. We have a donation in November for the Fire Department for a thousand dollar from Anonymous. And a donation in December for Morris Fire Department for five hundred from Horton Community Chest. And also for Fire Department in December for twenty-five hundred from Curtis and Savannah Wolf. And I will make a motion to accept those donations.
I'll second, that's very much appreciated too, those donations.
Absolutely, yes, thank you to all those involved. I'm sure thank yous have been sent out, I would guess, so. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Ordinances and resolutions. Have to talk really slow to get to six o'clock here. We have a resolution authorizing fund transfer.
And this is, this is the, I indicated, I believe in the last meeting that the USDA was not, we're not allowed to assess them for special assessments, and so this is a transfer of funds from a couple different places to go into that construction fund to make up for the loss of that revenue. So we're taking some from the sewer fund for the sewer portion of USDA's Iowa Avenue costs. And then from capital improvement fund where we do all of our roadwork for the street portion of that. And then that goes into the East Sixth Street Construction Fund.
You know, I was just curious when, when you have a government entity like that and they, they obviously have a building and they need water and sewer, it just seems odd that they don't have to pay for that. I mean, I know it's government, all that good stuff, but.
You know, that's true, I was thinking about this earlier and, but who are, who is the USDA, the ARS? Who is the soils lab as the government? And how do they get funded, they get funded from us. Okay, and who are we that we're transferring these money from, we are the government, and how do we get money? We get money from, partly from us. So basically, yeah, it doesn't seem as quite right, but take it from one pocket, put it in the other, kind of, even though it's not, it's taking it from our pocket now, let's not take it from their pocket. I see your point.
Yeah, I know, I just, I know.
And that's because they're federal government, or any government and it is fed?
Because they're federal.
So.
So the state, in the state, the state allows us to special assess against properties for other government agencies and and organizations and, and stuff like that, but the federal government has special, special privileges, but you know, and there's some argument, you know, that they're, they're here, we want them here. They provide very good jobs and they're, but then at the same time, you know, smaller towns like Morris, we have a, a high percentage of our property is not taxable, you know, because of the university campus, we, we don't get property taxes on those, those places and some of the other property that's in town, and that winds up being a problem. But then part of the calculation in local government aid that they consider is the fact that you do have things that you have to pay for and you don't have the resources to be able to pay for them. You know, so that is, they do look at, you know, your property tax wealth. Some places have more than enough money to pay for everything that they do and, and so it's, it's very complicated.
Does that come into your tax base formula that you always talk about, your, that tax base that you talk about, your budget?
Yeah, so there's, there's market value and then there's taxable market value and when they, when they, we'll talk about that.
Yep.
You know. But that's part of it, yeah.
It makes sense.
Going forward too, it'd be nice to note, because this was unaware of when we did the project, not that it really would have, but at least we would have known, yeah, we can put assessments on that building. So going forward, I mean, I don't know.
Well, the interesting part about it is the fact that we sent them a notice just like anybody else. And so we had an initial hearing to decide whether or not we even wanted to do the project. They got a notice, the university got a notice, everybody got a notice, and we, we never heard a word from them. And then we sent them notice that the work was, you know, being done and, and now we're going to do assessments and really, we never heard anything from them until right towards the end, then, and it was basically a phone call saying, hey, you're not allowed to assess us for stuff, and it, and it's like, okay, why? So you got to tell us why, and then all of a sudden, we didn't hear back from them until we got, finally got a letter from their attorney that said, this is why. You know, and it was right at, that was kind of the last minute that we found that out, you know. And yet at the same time, you know, it could be like, I think Whitney said that the post office did wind up paying an assessment, but they probably never figured out that they didn't have to. And so we weren't gonna, well, we didn't make them aware of that, you know. You know, it could have been that they just didn't have a, an attorney that understood what was going on with that kind of stuff. But you know what you said, Kevin, is absolutely right, you know, they need water and sewer and how do you get it?
Right.
You know, if you're, if they're building a brand new building, they're going to have to pay a connection fee, I would think. But special assessments are different and they're, they fall under a special state statute that in, in the end, the federal government never had a right to decide whether or not they liked that or not. And, and then the court decided that we didn't have a right to assess them eventually.
Well, yeah, because at the time that building was built out there, we didn't have any, well, we still don't really have water and sewer out there.
Sure.
That area, so I get that part, that makes sense.
And actually, if we'd have found this out earlier in the process, part of that assessment would have went to the other people that worked.
It could have, but then we wind up having that whole problem of how much can you actually assess one individual property? So realistically, we probably couldn't have put it on everybody else, it just wouldn't have worked.
What happens when, when we go by the city, when it's a city property, a park or, or whatever? Do we actually hold an assessment for the city, or have we just, that's part of the city's portion?
That's a good question. I, I think we're calculated in as a connection and then we wind up, you know, that just winds up in our share of the costs. And it's not, and it's not an actual assessment against us, but we just pick that up as part of our cost. But I, I think we get calculated in, because it wouldn't be fair that everybody else picked up our connection.
Right.
You know, that we, we would get calculated in there as one of the connections for water and one for sewer or whatever.
How about some pumps, like similar to this pump transfer that you're approving now?
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if you look at the work that was done, you know, Superior, I think, has been asking for a long time to get that two-inch line updated, and I think that was accomplished in that project, right Blaine?
Ah, the connections there.
The connection is up now, so they can stub in?
Yep.
And that was a four-inch line then?
Four inches, yeah, before they did their big concrete runway, like we call it, that where they park all the, the, the big systems and stuff when they're done with them. They ran that line underneath there, so they didn't have to worry about digging that back up and coming across there, but, but it's not connected up yet and there's some question as to whether or not the, the lift station that's out there can handle a four-inch line. And their system is doing okay keeping up with it, there's a couple other things that they did out there to keep up with the, the, the flow that goes through there, but whether or not the pumps are sized for four inches or two inches, there's some discussion about what has, has to happen next. But, but it's all set up and ready to go, so they don't have to worry about it.
Good. Good, good talk. Okay, so we have the resolution authorizing the fund transfer.
I will move on that resolution authorizing the fund transfer.
I will second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Sollee?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallochson?
Yes.
Marye?
Yes. Then we have a resolution authorizing agency agreement with MINDOT.
Yeah, so this is a general agency agreement and Whitney and I had to talk about this one for a while because we're trying to figure out what it was for, because we wind up, basically what this is, is we have to have an agreement with MINDOT to act as an agent on our behalf to be able to get federal funds to come through to Morris. And there's general agency agreements, and that's what this one is, which just means that we have an agreement, if something comes up, then they're going to be able to facilitate it for us. I think the last one we did was maybe in two thousand fifteen. But then we did have a couple agreements that we did specifically for projects. And I think that's why they didn't have to do a general one for a period of time, but it's basically just an agreement we have with them to accept money from the federal government on our behalf. And, and that's where, you know, like today we met and talked about the electric transit bus and that's federal money that's going to come through MINDOT for us. So it's just kind of a standard form of agreement that we have to have in place in order to move forward with funding. And we've done them before.
Are we looking for a second on that?
We're looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion authorizing agency agreement. One oh five, two oh four five with MINDOT.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We'll have a local vote, please.
Councilmember Sollee?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Gallochson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Marye?
Yes. We have a resolution approving wellhead protection plan, part two proposal.
Yeah, so one of the things that we have to do with MINDOT, or with MPCA is we have to have in place a plan to protect our wells and I think everybody knows, you know, where the water treatment plant is and all of our water wells are right around the water treatment plant. And this is phase, part two, part one was to do a study of, of, you know, our wells and all, all the data about them and everything, and, and now we have to put into place other things based upon what we learned from that original study. Boltman Mank is our engineers that take care of our water wastewater. They're the ones that helped us build the water treatment plant and we, I think you might remember, we had to put in a brand new well because one of the other wells was not up to the standards that needed to be in place. And, and so they know and understand all of our, all of our water infrastructure that we have. Their, their estimated costs, and they put estimated just because they're not quite sure if everything is covered, because you these are very complicated things when they're being put together and whether or not something else will pop up. They, they've been doing this for a long time and, and I don't foresee where anything else is going to pop up that they didn't know about, but I did put in some detailed information in the resolution and I did give you a copy of the actual work that they're planning to do and you can see it's fairly comprehensive, you know, what they plan on doing, the end result, what is their, how many tasks they wind up doing. But the end result is that they'll put together the plan and then they'll, they'll, it has to have a local review, it has to go before the public so the public can see it, and then once all that's done, they'll do the final report to the, actually, it's the Department of Health, not MPCA, but I'm recommending that we move forward with them, we actually budgeted money in, in the water utility fund to pay for it and, and then the plan is to get this done next spring and then get it submitted to Department Health when we need to have it in. Any questions?
You know, they really do a thorough job when they investigate and when they look into these projects. You look at all the scope of the work that's, comes into this, it's pretty involved.
Yeah, and it's really important to have, know and understand what's around your wells, you know, and, and actually ours are on, you know, our water treatment plant is on university property, we have a long, long, long-term lease for that property and you know, it's probably one of the most important things that we do as a community is provide fresh water for everybody. So it's very important that we get this done.
I will move on the resolution approving a wellhead protection plan, part two proposal, as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Do we actually still have those old wells, those old, old wells? Hundred and twenty, hundred and whatever, fifteen-year-old wells?
Ah.
From nineteen oh seven?
I don't know, I guess I couldn't tell you the answer to that, it could be we still have the site, but we updated the wells. Because actually, part of the water treatment plant project was, we, we updated the wells. You know, if you remember, we had all those little houses that were out there, you know, and then what they did is they, they, they put in new systems that are underground that don't need to be, don't need to be heated. You know, those little buildings, actually, we paid to heat those little buildings where, where those pumps were. But I.
It just caught my eye, old municipal wells that need to be sealed, and it lists four of them that, from nineteen oh seven.
I thought they were capped off at one time.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to go back and look.
Seems to me I remissed.
Well, yeah, they may be, actually, they may, more than likely they're capped off, but they probably aren't whatever they need to do.
Yeah, they have to be done a certain way.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, actually, there's other people that have wells in town that, and not just houses and stuff, but there's people that have water wells for sprinkling their yards and stuff and there's specific rules that they have for how you deal with those when, when you're done with them and, and to protect the aquifer.
Okay, thank you, any other discussion? We'll have roll call, vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Gallochson?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Sollee?
Yes.
Marye?
Yes. City managers' report.
Yeah, we got lots of time to talk about it, so. I'll just start, we did have a question that came up about Sunday liquor. And actually, it's all taken care of as far, as far as that goes, but the, the rule that's in place is that you can have Sunday liquor license, but you can't sell liquor before eleven o'clock in the morning. And, and that was set by the city, city council. So, but it's all taken care of, there was a question about what, what it was and, and whether or not, you know, we, we didn't even, we don't go around and check that to find out who's, who's serving and stuff like that on a Sunday morning, but. So I, I thought I'd share that with you. Thank you very much for meeting with me, we had a very good meeting for performance evaluation, I think, I think that was probably long overdue just from the standpoint of everybody being able to sit down at the table and just kind of talk about how, how the city's organized, how things work, how we communicate, you know, trying to get information from the public and all that. So I think the end result of that was something that's going to be good for everybody moving forward and and I appreciate the time that you took to do that. One of the things is important to understand that we do get, a lot of our funding is from the state of Minnesota and I was absolutely shocked at how large the state surplus was, but as you dig into it more, it's important to understand that a lot of that is one-time money. I think as much as twelve billion dollars they're talking about is one-time money. You know, that comes in from different programs and, and things like that. I, I know during the legislative session last year, they, they talked about how much money they're going to leave on the table with the Federal Transportation Department, because the state has to match some of that funding that comes in and, and so right now, everybody's kind of taking a look at what, what all this means, but we know that there's a, a legislature that can make decisions now in, in Minnesota based upon their party affiliation. They're not going to have to try to, try to work across the table like they did before. Although, if you listen to all the discussions that are taking place, everybody has their own idea on where that money should go and that's going to be tough to get everybody to agree, but the big, the biggest issue for us is local government aid because we know and understand that's our number one funding source and I truly believe that they're going to make adjustments to it. But at the same time, there's other things that we have to be aware of, they're talking about paid, paid medical leave for all employees and, and some of the initial discussions that I've heard is that there could possibly be an employer tax and an employee tax to help fund that. Kind of like they do with some of the other things that they have, you know, unemployment. We, we pay into our own retirement, the city pays into our retirement, things like that. So they, they have to try to work out all those details and then there's other things that, you know, we, I think we talked about it once before, but, you know, there's a big push to legalize marijuana in the state of Minnesota, which means if they do that, that you would see that as an issue. Right now tobacco is taken care of through the county, we don't actually have any rules locally in the city, it's done through the county. And, and, you know, we did have a discussion, Rebecca Young and I, and you may have seen in the newspaper where the county had a discussion about edibles, you know, and what happens with that, so. There's going to be some things that are going to benefit us, there's going to be some things that we're going to have to watch out for, you know, as far as now all of a sudden, are we going to have to do something different just because of the new rules and and then finally, I, I was part of a discussion that took place, there's like one-third of the legislators are going to be brand new. And that's going to be hard for them to get up to speed on everything that's going on, so. So we'll watch, we'll see what happens with that, but I know the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities has a legislative conference set up for, I think it's the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of January where we'll get a chance to find out what they're thinking and I'm sure the league's going to do one here probably in February and and then they're the ones that are lobbying for the things that are important to us for cities. And we'll get a chance to hear more from, from them about, you know, what they're seeing, what's going on. So it's kind of wait and see, but it's going to be interesting. I, I, they will get their work done, there's just no doubt in my mind they're going to get their work done and, and finally have, have, you know, a new budget, they'll have a bonding bill, they'll have all kinds of stuff happen. Any questions about anything or thoughts, we, we might reach, actually, one of the things I, I talked to a couple different people, it might be worthwhile for us to have, have like a little get-together with our legislators, invite them in to sit down and talk about what their thoughts are and as far as, you know, what's going to happen in the legislative session. You know, and there might be some added things, you know, just throw a couple of them out. You know, a ladder truck for the fire department, it's, it's not a Morris issue necessarily, it's a, it's a regional issue. We're out here and we have the only one that can go to certain places, if it's an elevator fire, if it's a rescue, you know, in one of these small towns and things like that, yet at the same time, as a city, we can't afford to buy our own, you know, and, and maybe that's something that they might be interested in, in doing something different with. You know, so things like that or, you know, I've mentioned before, you know, water and sewer on a, on kind of a basis to be able to try to complete our city. That might be something that we try to find a way to see if, if there's infrastructure money that's going to be put together, so we'll be looking at that.
Yeah, that, I think that's a really good idea, if we could try to get either them to stage like a town hall meeting or we invite them in and, you know, have a sit-down with them.
Yeah, it might be, you know, we've talked before about trying to get like a joint meeting with the school and the county and, and stuff. and stuff and they're really hard to do just cause everybody's busy and, and they wind up being a public beating, but yet at the same time that might be an opportunity to, you know, um, cause we know schools are gonna be very interested in what's gonna happen with, uh, the legislature and school funding and, and the county deals with social services and all those kind of things. And I think that's gonna be something that they're gonna be very interested. Daycare, they've already mentioned daycare issues, you know, trying to figure that out and, and, uh, it says we haven't done that before, but maybe, maybe we should. Now, I'll talk to Rebecca about that.
There's a pretty good, uh, pretty good article in today's, uh, Morris paper. Um, about, about the surplus and then also, uh, um, Senator Westrom and, uh, and Representative Anderson's, uh, ideas, I guess.
Right.
It was, it's, it's pretty good.
Well, and that's a good point too, cause we have a new representative. We know, we don't have, uh, um, Becker anymore, Jeff Becker anymore. We have, and Paul Anderson came and met with me for like a half an hour in my office and it was very nice that he did that, you know, and we had a chance to talk about, you know, just meet and talk about, you know, the kinds of things that we're interested in for Morris. So, so that, that was very, very nice. Um, EV transit bus, actually we, we met today with, uh, the, the company that we're gonna get the bus from, I think. Um, it's, uh, a long drawn-out process, but, uh, I don't know if we came to the conclusion that tomorrow the bus will probably be ordered. That, that was kind of the deadline that MINDA wanted to put on it. I look at Whitney, cause Whitney's part of this with overseeing transit and, um, uh, but we got a chance to talk about the bus, talk about all the things that are on it, uh, and, uh, the company is out of St. Cloud. What, what was the name of the?
North Central.
North Central, and that's where we get our other transit buses from. A- and so, uh, and it looks like the amount's gonna come in fairly close to what the grant is and that was one concern that we had because if it's over the grant budget, you know, what happens next, but, um, the biggest issue right now is supply chain problems. Cause in order for them to get a transit bus for us, that's gonna be electric. It has to come out of, uh, the bus company then go over to the electric engine company and then come back to North Central where they do all the finish work on it. And right now the, the supply chain and, uh, vehicle industry is way behind. You know, so these are chassis that are built by Ford, you know, as part of the Ford program and, and so many go to to buses, so many go to ambulances, so many go, go to other places and so uh, the timing on it's probably at least a year out if we get it ordered, but MINDA wants it ordered tomorrow. And, and then what'll happen is they'll put together a grant, uh, and then we'll bring it back to you to approve it, you know, for that, that actual purchase, but it's taken a long time to get to that point. And then we actually have what, two other, three other buses that, that are waiting for, you know, completion. So we have, we, we have a lot of transit vehicle stuff that we're working on. And then, uh, I, I'll just talk for a little while about this Moody's rating. Um, that was when, when we, we got notice from Moody's, they wanted to talk to us. It's like, oh no, this isn't good. Cause usually that's a bad thing. When the rating company reaches out to you and wants to talk to you about what's going on in your community and, and yet at the same time what it was is they're changing how they're doing ratings. And, and so when we met with them and, and, uh, Nick Anhut from, uh, Ellers was part of that, that conversation with them. What they're doing is they're diving deeper into really what's going on in your community and your finances and all that kind of stuff. And what they identified was based upon what's going on in Morris right now. Uh, they think they might be able to upgrade our rating. You know, because we do have, uh, a, you know, a very good program of how we put together budgets and stuff like that and we do have reserves, we do have, uh, um, actually, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, um, what, when you talked to him and, and Whitney got to sit in on her first rating call when we did our bond issue. You know, which is probably about an hour long and they wanna find out, find out about everything that's going on, but, um, when they rate you, they are very interested in when you're doing kind of the normal city kind of stuff like infrastructure. If you're in, like this project that we just finished is a project that they're very interested in. You know, because that's doing the things you need to do to keep up with what you have as a city and, and puts you in a better position moving forward. Uh, some of the other things that communities might do that maybe are more on the recreation side or more on the, uh, you know, uh, not, not necessarily necessary, even though that anybody that, you, you gotta have a little bit of everything. Um, they view them a little bit differently, but the bottom line is, is I think the financial position we're in right now, um, they, they like it a lot and actually, you know, I, Whitney got to sit in on the second discussion we had and they were very interested in what we're doing in Morris and all the things that are happening to include what's happening with sustainability and, and, and all those kind of things, so. Um, the next step is they, the, the individuals we talked to were the collectors. So they collected the data from us and then they bring it back to their, um, rating board. And then the rating board looks at all the information and they discuss it and then they may, might reach back out to us and ask us more questions. And then they'll make kind of a determination on what they think and then they'll, they'll get ahold of us and we, we, we'll have to talk to them about it. And then they'll make, make their determination on our rating. Now, we don't have a bond issue coming up, but, um, if we did, that would make a big difference on the interest rates, you know, for our bonds. And I couldn't tell you, I, I was gonna go back and check and see what our bond rating was.
Yeah, I think it was like an A, but then we got their proposing, we had upgraded to AA.
Yeah. So, so that was good news. A- and, uh, and then, uh, we, the hundred low lead tanks in, if you go out to the airport, you'll see that that tank's in, it's set up. It's got fuel in it, it's operating and then, uh, the old tank is gone. So you'll see a big, uh, area that's gravel there. So they took the old tank out and, and got rid of it and, and, uh, and then that'll, that'll set over the winter and we'll come back in the spring and we'll blacktop over the top of that area. So that was nice to get that all done. Any questions, anything else you wanna talk about?
So that Moody, Moody's rating isn't gonna affect anything that we currently have. It's just going forward?
Just going forward.
To improve our rating, to, to better our interest rates hopefully on borrowing money or any projects we do going forward.
But if we wind up, you know, doing like a equipment certificate or something, I mean, banks, banks are very interested in what your financial position is and these are the companies that, that rate you and what you're doing. And there's some bad, bad places that have really bad ratings, you know, because they're not doing fiscally what they should be doing to take care of everything that they have.
Just a question, probably not related to what we're talking about here, but where are we gonna stockpile our snow this year? Do we have a designated area again?
Yeah, out there on the high, uh, by the grain elevator. We have a-
Right where we've been putting it all?
Yep.
That's where we've been putting it.
Yeah, and then there's, uh, I think they're gonna go a little bit farther, uh, on, uh, Green River Road around the corner from where Gary Fair built his house, cause they used to stockpile some on the end of that, that road there, but, uh.
Okay.
Fairgrounds.
And then the fairgrounds.
Okay. So we got about three or four different options then. Okay.
Yep.
Good deal.
Yeah, it doesn't come up as an issue that anybody's worried about, but if we get a hundred inches of snow, it might be a different story.
Careful what you wish for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, anything else on the city manager report? Um, we might as well do the licenses, the two thousand and three licenses. Um, we've got a new list at your place. I believe it's everybody except Stone Throw.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Sure.
So that one will probably come in, uh, before the next meeting, so you'll, we'll just do it at the next meeting. Stacy did a really good job of coordinating all this and actually the deadline for getting everything in was the beginning of the month. And then I think most of it came in probably yesterday.
Right.
So, to try to get it, get it all done.
These are all pending insurance certification?
Yes, yeah, but I think most of this insurance and stuff is in our-
Yeah, they have to prove their insurance before it comes to you.
Or binding, so just, yeah, we, to stipulate that, that previous to it being located, that they need to have proof of a, a locked-in insurance.
Yep.
I will move on approval of the listed licenses for Sunday liquor, dents, on-sale liquor and the on-sale beer.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Um, then we, uh, something that came up from, uh, the, uh, um, city manager, uh, review that we had, uh, we talked about setting a work session for, or maybe this was from before.
Well, this is, this is for East Seventh Street. So we, we talked about that before. I talked to Jeff Kuhn. Um, and I don't know what your schedules are. He's got like next Tuesday, uh, next Monday and Tuesday afternoon at like four o'clock, I was thinking. If you wanna pick one of those two, that would work and then he's ready to sit down with you and talk to you about this project and kind of where it's at and, and give you more information on it. With the idea that ultimately, you know, uh, we, we have to make some kind of decision on moving forward and then that, that moving forward would probably involve meeting with people that live along there. Setting up a meeting to kind of explain, but we, we have to find out more about, you know, what, what the project would look like and some of the ins and outs with that financing and, and, uh, go from there. So my recommendation is if you can, pick one of those two days and set it and then he's good with it.
Monday would probably work better for me.
I'd like Monday.
Yep. All right.
Four o'clock?
Yep, if you wanna do four o'clock, just set it.
Wide open.
Three?
Three, three, three.
Four o'clock Monday. And that will be here.
Yeah, we'll meet here.
Council chambers or city hall.
And then I will let him know that.
Do we need a, uh, motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to have a work session for the Seventh Street. Work, our project, uh, for Monday, the nineteenth at four P M.
I will second.
Okay, um, okay, any other discussion? I have a meeting in St. Cloud that day, but it's in the morning, so I'm hoping, I should be back by then. Um, so, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And, you know, we did talk briefly about a regular work session, um, and Jeff, I really liked, uh, you threw out a, an option of maybe like every fifth Tuesday, um, have a work session, which is roughly four times a year. Um, is that something Blaine that could go into the, um, standing rules?
I think it could, yeah. If you wanted to do it that way, just to make it official.
Next, uh, first meeting in January, you'll adopt the standing rules, right?
Right.
Organizational meeting in January at January third, I believe. Um, so I guess that's up to you guys, what, uh, what you wanna do with that.
Would we do it before the meeting?
Well, I think-
Or you just have an extra meeting?
It's, oh, it's an extra meeting.
It'd be an extra meeting, so-
Yeah, we have a council meetings on the second and fourth, but the fifth Tuesday, which comes up four times a year. So our first one would be January thirty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually in January, the first one. And then there's one in May. And then there's one in August.
But that way we have something scheduled, so it's just, we know in our minds that yes, in three months, we're having our next one and if we have things to try it, see how it works and we can always adjust it.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Is that something that you would like a motion for, Blaine, to, uh, to, to put in the standing rules?
Yeah, you could do that. You know, that way, you know, it gives you a reason why you're doing it, but, um, yeah, I mean, I, I really like that idea and that's one of the things, you know, just coming out of our discussion that we had that, um, there, well, you, you look at tonight, you know, there's, there's stuff that comes on the table that's really kind of hard to understand sometimes and yet at the same time, you know, that would, that would be an opportunity to maybe have the engineer come in and talk about, you know, some of the stuff we talked about. One of them could be, you know, to meet with department heads and just find out what's going on with department heads. Uh, but, but the, the whole nature of work sessions is that it's an opportunity to talk about issues. You can't make any decisions about what you're gonna be, um, doing, but, um, we just don't get a chance to do that enough.
But if we have subject matter that we wanna talk about, if we have a list and we bring it to you on different items that we could get somebody to present the information.
Right, I think there would have to be an agenda made up so that we know and understand what we're gonna be talking about.
Yeah, I know, wouldn't that have to be, be presented on the previous council meeting that we're gonna have a ma- uh?
Not necessarily, if you set a, kind of a standing work session meeting.
Oh, okay.
We would just have to have, have the agenda done, but it isn't something new, so we could definitely reach out and talk to Aaron and just make sure we're doing it the right way.
Okay, did we, uh, did we motion that?
No.
No.
We, we need a motion on that?
I, I think you should.
I have a motion. The motion that we have work sessions on the fifth Tuesday of the months to happen four times a year moving forward and to do that on the fifth Tuesday in city hall, council chambers.
Kind, it'd be council chambers.
Council chambers, time-wise, the five fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Okay, um, six o'clock, we might as well move into the budget meeting. Turn it over to you, Blaine.
All right. And if you have any questions, uh, the, the purpose of this is, uh, by law, we have to have a public hearing it, uh, to present our budget and then give the public a chance to ask questions. So if you got any questions, you certainly can ask them. Um, the city council's seen this, uh, before, cause this is, uh, um, part two of the process that we have for setting budgets. Part one is the preliminary budget that was done in September, uh, and included, uh, uh, preliminary levy that went to the county. Um, and then, uh, we came back and we had our budget work session in, uh, October to talk more about the budget and then we moved into, um, finalizing everything. Um, you do have, you have a copy of this PowerPoint presentation. The only thing I would tell you is that, and let me, let me start by saying this, cause I think it's really important to understand. I am so happy having Whitney in the finance department because re- really, um, we work very well together and she does a tremendous job of kind of proofing everything that I'm doing. So actually in the PowerPoint presentation, there's a couple, couple, um, notes that I'll make. I, I don't plan on spending a lot of time going through this, uh, but at the same time, um, there, there's one update and there's, uh, one, one little, uh, number that I had wrong when I was putting it together, but uh, the big thing is, um, um, you know, this is our, our, uh, this is our, um, time to set our levy for taxes for next year, uh, and to set our budget. So if you look at our property tax levy and the preliminary levy, um, we, uh, we, we had a higher level levy than this. So if you look at our property tax levy and the preliminary levy, um, we, uh, we, we had a higher level levy than this. Um, I, I, I presented it to you and said, uh, I was presenting a six point six percent levy. Which included three percent for general purposes and three point six percent for the debt service on the, the construction project that we did this year. Uh, twenty twenty-two improvement project. The levy I'm, uh, presenting to you now is three point six percent. So I've basically taken the three percent general levy and, and, and dropped that off. And the one thing I would just tell you really quick is that I don't get into too much information about. Tax rates and, and, and taxes and stuff like that, but one of the things I did do, I, I remembered to bring it, but. This is my tax statement that I got from the county. And, um, on the bottom, it says, uh, the percentage change of my taxes on my house was seven point five percent. And immediately it's like, what? Okay. But if I go back and look, the value of my property, uh, was raised by about seven percent.
Jeez.
So I don't, well, I don't know, I don't know, Jeff lives about four doors down from me, five doors down, but. But so that's just important to understand that, uh, you know, and that's based upon six point six percent increase in, in the city levy, but. Um, so this will go down just slightly, but, but all of it is probably due to increase in value or most of it is. And that's just important to understand, so, um. And, and sometimes we don't, we don't do, um, control, you know, exactly how our property is valued and how our, all the. Tax rates affect our value.
If we want to follow along here in our information in front of us, though, the actual information we had from Friday, or I think we had something that was updated or sent to us. More recent that included some different stuff, or did I?
And that was actually.
That was just the budget packet.
Okay.
I think, I think, uh, what happens is when Ashley's putting this together, now that we're doing it electronically. Um, if we have double sided stuff, you might've got something that was single, you know, missing every other page and. So I think you, you sent out an updated one and that was the big budget.
Okay.
And we, we won't even look at that.
Okay, and just clarify that, that we're going to follow through and have something for us elders with glasses to.
Right.
Focus on the.
It should be towards the end of your PDF that you got.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
So then we get into the prop, what, what is the levy? So the general fund is about one point one million. That includes, um, a lease, because G A S B, the Government Accounting Standards Board makes us put, uh. Uh, leases into one pot and they used to be in debt service, but, uh, they're not anymore. And then the library has a separate levy and then we have debt service levies and then we have, you can see the tax abatement. Uh, for, uh, the drips property. Um, so that's, that's what makes up that one point seven million dollars in levy. Um, market value, so we talked about property, market value in Morris went from two hundred and eighty-seven million to three hundred and two, uh, million. Dollars and that was about a five percent increase. Uh, which means that, you know, property value in, in Morris is going up. Now, some of that is increase in value based upon sales, but some of it is also increase in value because we had more property. Uh, things were built. And then, uh, the taxable part of that, so this is actually interesting, so. We had three hundred and two million and then the taxable part is two hundred and sixty-nine. So there's a large chunk of property that is not taxable, even though, um, it does hold value. And the taxable value went up about five point seven percent, but then. The tax capacity, which is calculated based upon the tax rates that are set at the state level, um, didn't, didn't raise a lot. Even though we had more market value, um, it didn't transfer down into, uh, actual. Capacity to levy taxes against it, which is why I don't get into it, cause it's very complicated. But it's just important to understand that we, we do have value going up and so then.
I mean, basically on that last slide, it's, it's saying that we have the tax capacity to have a levy at three point two seven.
Right, if we, if we, if we took a hundred percent of what they're saying, you could tax property, that's what we'd be able to levy.
Right, but we don't.
But we don't.
One point seven, so.
Yep.
You know, we're what, sixty-five percent of our tax capacity probably.
Yeah, and so then we get into the, the rate and so we're at about fifty-two point five percent of, you know, what our capacity is. If the numbers were got.
What, what would be a, a general rate across the state? Is that, you have any information on that?
Uh, no, but I could find it. There, it's all over the place, but you, I mean, you, you have some cities where. You know, they have massive levies and their rates are nowhere close to ours. You know, because they have so much property that can pay for all the things, you know, um. You know, what, what we do isn't necessarily expanded out based upon how much property you have. Maybe population would be a better one or road mileage or whatever, but, but it's all over the place. It's, it's kind of hard to compare, but, but again, that's something that we do provide to Moody's when they're looking at, you know, what are your taxes and? And, uh. Who, you know, that's why I, I think the best thing we can do is to try to make incremental increases to try to keep things down. I, I know I did talk to the, uh, the assessor and, and, you know, for a while their properties are selling for a lot of money. And I think that's starting to slow down, you know, and, and that was part of the Fed's raised the interest rates. And so now I don't know what a home loan is, but it's not two percent and it's not three percent anymore. Might be closer to four or five percent and so.
And some, and some of the valuation increase is the assessor's playing.
Because of that, yeah. Well, that and what they have to do is they have to take all the sales and then they adjust their, their valuations of property based upon sales. And when they, they come and do their, their, uh, meeting with you, they, they explain that to you. Um, just a few of the revenue expense considerations, um, obviously we have a levy increase, we have stable L G A. We had a two point five percent wage increase. Um, this budget does include reductions for the P D costs, uh, which I'll talk about just a little bit. Um, um, focuses on capital improvements, focuses on, uh, funding for capital outlay. And then, uh, I'm recommending that we increase our utility fees and, and we're seeing stable sales and liquor store. And actually, that was one of the items that Whitney wound up, um, giving me updated information on. Uh, budget comparison, um, and keep in mind, I think every year Brian usually makes a count. Our, our bu- our budgets are really, it's not like we know on ex- exactly what we're spending all the time, cause we have so many pieces to the budget. So the total budget includes everything. General fund and library fund and all of our capital improvement, uh, capital project funds, everything and. Um, so actually, if you look at this, we're raising our budget ten point eight percent. But there's reasons why it's that high and, and some of that has to do with, uh, some of the things that, that we're doing that. Uh, we actually get funding for from other places like capital outlay, you'll see. Uh, the city's general fund budget, the main operating budget of, uh, the city has, uh, got a two point four percent increase. Um, this, and, this, um, budget includes the debt service on the loader that I mentioned. That we've had for a few years now and, and, uh, all the other things that we do, uh, with regards to the, the city's general purpose. Um, you know, uh, fire, uh, public works. Um, and, and one of the things just, you know, I'll share here is that, um. Um, I mentioned that we, we saw a reduction in our costs for law enforcement, all total, it was probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. But yet at the same time, then we have normal costs that are going up, we have wages that are going up two point five percent. Um, and, and one of the things I shared with you during the work session is, you know, back in two thousand, I think it was two thousand nine. We downsized one public works maintenance employee and we're putting that back as part of this package. Uh, because we know and understand that we've had maintenance concerns, being able to do all the things that we need to do. So that's part of this, we had forty-nine percent increase in insurance costs that was really kind of a, a, a blow to, to everybody. Uh, that, that we had to try to make up for and, and, uh. Yet at the same time, there's a couple other things, we're not doing election next year, so then we. Set aside that money and put it back into, uh, a place that we can pull it back out for the following year and then. The balancing account for the general fund is the capital outlay transfer. So this, this budget transfers a chunk of money into the capital outlay. Capital outlay tends to be one-time purchases. Which means that next year, if we need to, we can pull money out of there and use it to balance our budget again. That's the way I've been doing it for, since two thousand seven, you know, I, I, I made sure that we put. Two to three hundred thousand dollars into capital outlay. If we get more money from L G A, uh, from the legislature this next spring. That's money that we'll get every single year moving forward unless they make a cut. But it's money that we could use to do some additional things that maybe we didn't, didn't have enough money to do. And then the next year, you, you kind of do the same thing, cause, um. You know, one of the things that we know and understand is that inflation is very high, although, you know, I, I follow that really close. They're, they're talking about it coming back down. I think the consumer price index to, today they released, it was like seven point one percent. Last wo- last month it was seven point seven percent. Uh, and they think that inflation's going to come back down, but right now, labor contracts are being negotiated at a much higher rate. You know, we're at two, two and a half percent, I mentioned, and the new contracts in some cases are four, four and a half percent. Uh, and that's something that's going to have, have to happen next year is negotiate our new contracts for the upcoming years.
Um, on the general fund, part of that, uh, one of the other revenue sources, uh, that you don't list there is, is property tax part of that?
Yep.
That goes in the general fund too?
Yep.
Alright, and that was, I think. Yeah, one point seven or so is what we take in for property tax. That, well, that's.
Well, that's, that's the overall.
That's the overall levy, yeah.
Yep, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so property taxes right now are probably about twenty percent of the general fund. May, they were running around eighteen percent of the general fund. And, uh, local government aid is probably sixty percent of the general fund. So the, the aid that we get from the state is the major funding source that we use. Um, capital improvements, uh, we continue doing what we're doing with capital improvements. This is where the franchise money goes and, and, uh, actually I got a list of the things that we're going to do. One of the things that Russ is going to focus on next year is crack filling on the streets as opposed to seal coating. Uh, cause we want to make sure that, and we, we have a company that comes and does a very professional job of doing that. Um, to, to try to maintain these roads that we're improving and, and, uh, keep them in good shape. Today is going to be a very hard day on our roads, very hard. You know, because it never, it is never good to have rain in December and then have it freeze in every crack and every road that might have a crack in it. But, uh. Yeah, and so then next year I think it's going to be the last, probably the last year for sidewalk cutting. That was a very good project that we did and I think they're going to be able to finish up. Uh, so all the sidewalks in town would have been done and, and then we'll do some reclaim work and, and, uh, continue on. Capital outlay fund, uh, the, uh. Um, I mean, this is a huge number for, for, for the city or, but yet at the same time, there's a bunch of money that comes into this that, uh. Helps pay for it, so we're increasing our capital outlay fund budget by almost forty percent, but that's because we have funds that come in and. Let me just see if I can do this without screwing it up. So this is, is it going to let me do it?
It flashed.
Yeah. I got.
It's pretty.
So, now let me just try this. And maybe it won't let me, uh, I gotta go do this first, I think. We'll get it, there we go. We'll get it, I think there's another one I gotta bring, bring down too. No, maybe I'm not going to get it. Right, right, I told Kevin right before I started, never fails when you set up, something funky happens. What I was trying to do is pull up the capital outlay listing, but you have a copy of it in your packet.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, there's a couple, couple things in there that are important to understand and, and one of them is that. There's a lot of grant money, so when we look at, uh. When we look at, uh, transit stuff, we have transit bus garage, that's a million dollars and eight hundred thousand of that comes from transit funding and. One of the things I'll mention to you, because the, the, uh, I'm recommending that we deficit spend in this one by about. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but last year we, we looked at deficit spending. Because we had to put in money for the transit, uh, bus garage. And, uh, that was our local share of the transit bus garage, but because the timing on getting that all taken care of. Took so long with the state of Minnesota, we never got to it until now and, and we're going to be doing it next year. Uh, so, yeah, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand is, is, is what the, the deficit spending is for this. So all the rest of that, two million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand is paid for either by revenues that we're taking in. From the capital, from the capital outlay transfer from the general fund or from, um, other grants and, and things that are going to come in. All the transit buses we talked about, uh, one of them's a hundred percent funded, one of them's ninety-five percent funded. The next one I think is ninety percent funded, the electric buses is, uh, part of this and that's a hundred percent funded, uh, by grants and so. Even though we're spending more money, there's more money coming in and basically the, the, uh, the negative. Uh, amount on this is almost identical to what it was last year, we just never did it last year. So I don't know if that helps you. You do have the capital outlay listing, uh, the one, the one thing I would tell you too is that, uh. I sat down with the department heads, we talked about it, um, we, we decided that, uh, we would recommend. So for instance, the pickleball court is in here, that complex is in here. The back hole with the, uh, cement breaker is not, but what's going to happen is, uh, Whitney's finishing up with all the FEMA. Disaster stuff and, and we're going to get a reimbursement for FEMA for a lot of things that we normally would have paid for out of our, our general fund. Anyway, and so when that money comes in, um, we'll, we'll be able to utilize that money. Um, to buy probably that piece of equipment and some chainsaws and maybe something else. So you're going to see that come as a side recommendation right away, probably in January, I think we'll know what that number's going to be. And we'll come back to you on that. Let me just, library, um, library has a seventeen point seven percent increase in their budget, but forty-five thousand of that is, uh, capital outlay. So we had that discussion during the work session, we're not doing carpets, but we're doing all the other stuff that they wanted at the library and. What happens is because the library is a separate fund, we wind up transferring money from the capital outlay into the library fund to pay for those. Those items that they needed there. And that's just part of that overall ten point eight percent budget that I talked about. Stormwater admin, we're recommending, there's actually a resolution in here to raise the fee just slightly. It's twenty-five cents every two, two months for residential and fifty cents every two months for commercial. Uh, and that money goes towards, uh, administering all of our stormwater stuff. Which we know and understand, I think I, did I mention it last time? Maybe I didn't put it in the. We did not get fined by M P C A for our violations. We got notice of that, I don't, I don't think I put that one in there yet. That'll come to you in the next council packet, but, uh, we did get notice from them that, uh, we did not get fined for our violations and. I think most of them were corrected before they ever sent the letter out that we had violations, so. So that was good news, but Bolton, Bolton and Mank will help watch over this for us and it's just important to have funds to be able to do that. Lodging tax fund, uh, that we, we kind of talked about that before. We have a really good marketing plan, uh, the Hudson Inn will come on. Uh, the Hudson Inn will come on to the market here in the spring, and they'll generate some more revenue, and, and, uh, we'll be able to spend, spend that on all the marketing. Here's just a quick breakdown of our, uh, debt service, the different, uh, bonds that we have. We did the new bond this year, uh, 2022 bond for the improvement project, and. And then we get into the utility funds. Um, there's a couple caveats to this. Um, uh, the, the water utility fund, actually, this budget has a deficit of 57,000 dollars. But there's a note down here, um, uh, where we were required by the PFA, uh, Public Facility Authority to fund, uh, depreciation. So it's 110,000 dollars in this, this budget. And, and that just goes into the bank and is, stays there. And actually, one of the, one of the income things that I think you're going to see is right now, interest rates on our investments are higher because of the feds and what they're doing. Uh, but this also includes that 36,000 dollars that we had for that, uh, uh, Part II, uh, Water Study, Well Protection Plan. So, um, it, this is the one that we have to watch really close. And, and one of the things I didn't share in, in your memo is that right now, supply chain issues are really creating a problem with, uh, chemicals. And so we're trying to work through that, what's going to happen with soda ash and lime moving forward, because we might see major increases in those costs. Sewer fund is short just a little bit, but, um, they, the, both of these have reserves that are over a million dollars, I believe, right, Whitney? A- and so in order to spend some of that reserve on, on a piece of equipment, you have to negative, uh, uh, spend, and that's part of what we're doing. Uh, we talked about the Jetter truck needing a new tank, and that was 75,000 dollars. And then, um, this also has half a pickup truck. Pickup trucks went up. So, so that gets to be an issue that we, we're watching really close. Refuge fund is basically a pass-through for the most part of, uh, what's collected and what, what goes back to the refuse cellar. Liquor store, um, we're still doing well in the liquor store. Um, we, we, I did factor in the new rates for, for, uh, employees that, that the city council approved with the memorandum of understanding with the union. Um, the, uh, budgeted revenues. The interesting part about the liquor store is probably the biggest month, I would guess, is December. So right now, we're at 2.2 million dollars. The, the budget amount was, uh, 2.4, but, uh, between October and, what was it? Between October and, and November, it was probably 400,000 dollars worth of sales. You know, so I know they did really well around Thanksgiving. Uh, but, but Christmas, New Year's is the, the biggest month of the year, so. So they're in good shape. And the one thing about the liquor store is that, um, we do draw a little bit of money off the liquor store profits, but this year, it's kind of the normal. We didn't take anything extra. If we wanted to, we could take, you know, uh, you know, 100 grand off of them. And they, they have a healthy reserve in the liquor store, you know, to use for a one-time thing and not schedule it for the future. Central Garage is just, um, you know, Brad working on his stuff and, and all the different departments and stuff, we allocate that out. And the, the only reason we have the central garage is because transit, um, because the federal government requires that we keep track of all of our costs with our transit buses, maintenance and stuff, and so that's why it's set up. And then just for the future, the state's got money. We'll see what happens with it. Union contracts need to be negotiated next summer, fall. We'll see what happens with that. Um, and I'll, I'll just mention too, in this budget, we did look, um, um, at the numbers for things like fuel, supplies, equipment, repairs, all them, to make sure we put enough money in there because of what we're seeing with the current environment, with everything that's going on. And, and then, uh, I think finding employees is going to be a continued issue, you know, moving forward, and that's the discussion that's taking place with administrators across the state of Minnesota. And then the last thing is just, the FEMA disaster settlement will come in, and that's going to provide us some funds to do some things that we need to do with the equipment and stuff like that. So any questions? Any questions that you might have about anything? And if you do, you can always come in City Hall and stop in, talk to me, and, and, or come to another meeting and ask questions and stuff, but.
I'm sure, um, we're kind of new in town, just wanted to see how things operate.
Yep.
Well, thank you, it's good to see you here.
Yeah, it's a, a very, very good city council. They do a very good job, and, and, uh, um, yeah, we're in good shape for the future.
So we have several resolutions. Taking one at a time. Resolution approving the final 2022 tax levy for collection in 2023.
I'll move on that resolution. I will second.
Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Gillickson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mervis?
Yes. We have, uh, resolution adopting the final 2023 budget for the city of Morris.
I will, I will move on that resolution, adopting the final 2023 budget for the city of Morris.
I'll take it.
Any discussion? Uh, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gillickson?
Yes.
Mervis?
Yes. We have a resolution setting the annual benefit amount for the Morris Fire Relief Association firefighters at 2350 per year, starting January 1, 2023. Thank you for laying that all out for us, Blaine. It's, I know you do that every year, but it's, uh.
Well, the one thing I would tell you is that's the shortest meeting I've ever had with the relief association. Because, uh, when they came in to meet, and then they, they showed me what they wanted, and I, I'm like, that's exactly what I was going to recommend to you. And, and, uh, because investments took a slight dip, but still at the same time, we, you know, we've been raising it 50, 50 dollars every year for I don't know how many years. And so they were happy, uh, it worked out good for our budget, so.
I will move approval of the increase for the fire department retirement effective January 1 of 2023.
I will second that. Any, uh, further discussion? We will have, uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Gillickson?
Yes.
Mervis?
Yes. We have resolution increasing the 2023 stormwater administration fees, administrative fees.
I will move on that resolution, increasing the 2023 stormwater administrative fees.
I'll second.
Yeah, and that's a quarter per, uh, customer, residential customer, and 50 cents increase per commercial. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Gillickson?
Yes.
Mervis?
Yes. And finally, we have resolution increasing sewer and water utility rates for 2023.
I'll move on that resolution, increasing the sewer and water utility rates for 2023.
I will second.
You know, you get that water and sewer bill, you just kind of cringe, but you know what? When you open a faucet, it's awful nice to have good water coming out.
Consistent, you can count on it.
Yep.
That, that actually, our bill is relatively cheap compared to some places.
Yeah, you're right.
Some places, it's, some places, ours, ours is what, uh, for every two months, right?
Yep.
And I see some places get that every month.
Every month.
Is that your garbage, your water, your sewer?
That's actually one of the things that we talked about, is our utility rates are lower than most cities our size, and, and we're softening the water at the plant, but.
Yeah.
But the philosophy is just tweak it a little bit, not wait until you need to raise a lot.
Right.
But when we do improvements, we do assessments also.
Right.
Which some cities or some locations.
You're absolutely right, that's why their rates are higher.
And that's, that's some, something that people come and ask, well, why can't everyone just pay it? Well, that would be a way for us to do that. But in fairness to the ones that have done the improvements, I mean, we did ours in the 90s, and I thought it was crazy high, but yeah, now you look back and it's like, oh my God, what a bargain it was that. It's, it's not going to get cheaper, but.
Right.
You got to look at the big picture.
Right, thank you. Any other discussion? We'll have roll call vote for the resolution, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gillickson?
Yes.
Mervis?
Yes. Okay, any other, uh, anything else to come before the council tonight? All right, well, Merry Christmas, everyone. I guess we'll, we'll have a work session, but, uh, um, on Monday, so.